Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call to order the Lennox School Committee meeting of October 24th, 2022. And our first order of business is hearing public comment.
Chairman, may I?
You may.
I don't want to set a negative tone for tonight, however, I was looking at the agenda. And then the application procedure for superintendent and such. It says verification that the candidate holds or will be qualified to hold by the expect appointment of Massachusetts license as a superintendent. Being a robust school system, I would hope we can rebuild on our mistakes of the past several months. And make an experience our main priority. We need experienced applicants that can recreate what has been diminished in the recent hires. Please take into consideration of put experience as your first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cherry?
Mary Cherry, I'm the president of the Lennox Education Association. I'm going to apologize in advance. I didn't really prepare thoughts. I have some thoughts in my head and I hope that what I have to say makes sense. Every time we have a meeting like this, every time something new happens in the school system of Lennox, an article is invariably written in the Berkshire Eagle and alludes to what has been commonly referred to as the bullying report. And the inclusion of staff on student incidences of bullying. I've asked our superintendent to ask you or to on his own clarify exactly what the bullying report said and did not say. The bullying report, in my understanding, is a report of how incidents of reported bullying have were handled by our, what is now our previous administration. The lawyer who you hired to conduct that investigation was not investigating the reports of bullying and whether or not those accusations were true. It is my understanding that the investigator was merely trying to ascertain whether the process was followed. What keeps happening in my eyes, in my members' eyes, is that we keep as a membership getting dragged through the mud in the paper every time, unfortunately, this district frequently is in the paper. It is our sincere wish that this school committee will direct someone, either the lawyer or our superintendent or our assistant superintendent, to conduct the investigations that need to be conducted in order to either clear the names of our members or initiate a process by which they will be informed of wrongdoing or informed of how their behavior should change. Because at this point, so many months later, none of them have been contacted. This investigation that didn't take place in the spring still has not taken place. It didn't take place over the summer. It didn't take place in September when I was alerted that it was going to be taking place by the superintendent. And to my knowledge, it has yet to take place. I urge you to wrap up what was found in that bullying report and go forward or announce that the investigations are over and there was no finding of fault. That's number one. Number two, I was at your committee meeting on Thursday and I was relieved to hear, I think it was Mr. Munch, say that he, it was his desire that this superintendent not be involved in hiring the principal. It is our membership's desire as well, that I don't know what the legal process is, but I know even myself, who I am a few years away from retirement, wouldn't want myself to be involved in that process. Because you need stakeholders who are going to be around to see through what decisions they have made. So I encourage you and you have the support of the LEA in your desire to not have the current superintendent be the one who fills that role. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the school committee meeting minutes of October 11, 2022.
I moved to approve the minutes from the, I'm sorry, 11:22?
October 11th.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote on favor? Okay, superintendent's search, and I'm gonna actually turn this discussion over to Orin.
I guess one just procedural point I would make at the outset in terms of subcommittee meetings and how the HR subcommittee will be operating going forward, there was some discussion of whether or not other members of the committee can join a subcommittee meeting. I gather we since received guidance from our council that they cannot, they're going to speak. That's just factually incorrect. It takes five minutes to go to the Massachusetts Attorney General's website, search for recent determinations, type in subcommittee quorum, and find a recent decision where they discuss when committee members can participate in a subcommittee meeting. And the test is whether they are treated as council members or members of the public. So we could not hold an HR subcommittee meeting in which we also hear like this and the public sits there and is saying, oh, there was an HR subcommittee meeting. But the way in which the HR subcommittee does in fact operate and as our subcommittees operate in general, where we sit around the table with any member of the public who wants to join and participate, and people are not on the subcommittee participate if they have contributions as members of the public, is perfectly permissible. And we will continue to welcome it. So, you know, we, I've spoken with administrators and others with experience in past searches and encourage them to join our meetings to participate in that discussion. And if members of the committee have thoughts on prior searches and so forth that they would want to contribute there, welcome to do so as well. And I hope you will. With respect to the searches, the interim search, so the HR subcommittee is meeting tomorrow afternoon. The interim search, a number of potential candidates have been identified. And we will discuss them. And I think everybody's hope is to identify and move forward with an interim candidate very quickly. So we will look at what those options are and hope to bring something back to the, we'll then obviously have to speak with someone who we might want to hire, but hope to come back to the committee as soon as the next school committee meeting to potentially make an appointment if there's a candidate we're all comfortable with. And then with respect to the full-time search, there are a number of moving pieces. One is finalizing the materials that will go out in terms of a brochure about the schools of the community, the official job posting and advertisement and so forth. I will try to finalize that language tomorrow. Second is timeline. Roughly speaking, I think what we're looking at is essentially having the job posted in November, having initial round interviews in December and then being a position interview finalists in January, which would keep us on, on schedule with a regular cycle and anyone else out there who's hiring. Again, we need to discuss that tomorrow and finalize what those dates might be. I think our intention is to convene a, a search committee that includes other people from the schools and the community. And so we'll have to figure out exactly what that looks like and bring those people on board. And then two open questions that we'll also try to finalize tomorrow. One is if we want to retain a search firm and one is if we want to conduct any sort of survey to supplement what we already have from a couple of years ago. So that's sort of what is on the table and pushing forward tomorrow, I think we touched on a number of those issues at the meeting last week. I think if other folks have questions, thoughts, reflections from prior searches, now would be a good time to run through that as well.
Yeah, and Orin and I met on Friday last week, I think it was Thursday, Friday, and talked extensively about some of the parameters that searches, you know, need to take. So we've had a good conversation about, about a lot of the nuts and bolts of things. But I know the committee, members of the committee who've been, you know, on previous searches want to have a chance to perhaps talk about some of the positives or negatives that they felt. So I don't know if anybody wishes to bring something up.
I'll start, I guess. My, I've often found during searches, especially during, well, during the, going back, I've been involved in, in two searches as a member, as a school committee member. What has, what I, what I found at times is that there may be questions that I want to ask and are gleaned from the information that the candidate has provided that doesn't quite fit into the questions that the entire committee is, is asked, you know, asked to ask. And I, and, and there are times when the appropriate time to ask those maybe at the end, but then we run out of time. So there have been a number of instances when there's just something that I see in a resume that I either would, would like the candidate to expand on, to really get a sense of who they are. And, or there may be something that doesn't quite make sense that needs clarification. And, and I, and I feel that not really knowing whether these questions have been asked in the vetting process and oftentimes finding out they haven't been, I, I would hope that there would be some flexibility and some ability to to kind of find out a little bit more about who the candidate is rather than just having kind of stuck questions.
Yeah, yeah, I was, our interviews that we did for Student Services was the first of those sort of committee interviews that I've been a part of and I was struck by that sort of constraint as well. I think one option that I, you know, I want us to look at a little bit to address that is to prepare the set of standard questions that we're asking everybody to be a little bit more open-ended, which will, should then permit some additional follow-ups on particular points of interest. So for instance, if we ask all the candidates, you know, can you speak to those parts of your resume, anything? Best kind of highlight your, your preparedness for the job. Someone who had a follow-up question about a particular candidate's resume, I think.
Because I'm on the HR committee, I've made some notes, I think more, more having to do with our posting and some thoughts about qualifications and some research we've all been kind of doing on our own about consultants. I probably would save that for tomorrow because I think that's in the context, I was kind of doing my homework today and going through, so I'll save that for tomorrow. But yeah, I will. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to an opportunity for, and I think outline you started to create, creates a robust process, you know, to include input from the community. I feel like we've tried to do that in the past and I did have some feedback from somebody who felt like our faculty and community and education maybe weren't included. And so I want to try to balance that a little bit, maybe get a sense about why people, you know, somebody that sent me some feedback and said, a number of us feel excluded from this process. And I was on the superintendent's search that led to our current superintendent. And I felt like there were many, you know, we had many meetings that were on Zoom. They were accessible to a lot of people. There was a very good, I thought, cross-sector of the community. I was on that committee as a community member at the time I was not on the school committee. So I really thought we did have that. So I think, you know, if anybody wants to, you know, by email to Orin or me or Megan, you know, some thoughts about who, how, you know, sometimes you have the, the struggle of too many people and it gets unwieldy. So I think there's that balance of making sure people are, get to participate and then also that the system can move forward. And usually, I don't remember because once our search committee, we were a screening committee and then went on to the full school committee to make the final decision. I was not on the school committee at the time, so I just don't remember. But, you know, we have had opportunities for community presentations, community input. And note, at that moment, people can come, I think that can be a little tricky because people that are coming in at the end and you're down to one or two candidates. So in my mind is the concept of whether we do a community forum in the, in the past for various things, whether it's a leader selection or our strategic planning, we've had sort of this robust community conversation where we're literally recording people's thoughts. That's time-consuming, but I noticed that a couple of the consultants do facilitate something like that. So maybe some feedback, Ms. Cherry is here, I'm looking at Ms. Kelly, thinking about whether or not something like that would be helpful because then people at least feel like they've been heard even if they're not on the subcommittee, you know, I'm just trying to think of ways to get really maximum community engagement because we are hearing some people feeling, you know, maybe they weren't heard or not in the way they want to be. Some of that. And I know that's some of our conversation.
But the initial resume screening, that's always an area that I've been a little concerned with, you know, the resumes kind of randomly for a period of time, making sure that we, we, the committee gets to take a look at them and filters them out, you know, first time through. And tracks what we've done so we can have some, some thoughts behind what happened. You know, it's, it all makes sense in the moment and then you come back to it, fix my schedule, now what happens there? So.
And, and one of the concerns I, I shared with Orin the other day was that sometimes with the search committees, with the search firms, either NASDAQ or MASC or private group, they do the vetting and you don't necessarily see all of the resumes yourself. We asked MASC last time around if we could see all of them rather than just the ones that they were putting forward. But that's a, that's definitely, you know, depending on what, you know, Orin and the, and the subcommittee want to do. I think it's good to see them all, but but I'm not sure that every search firm would, would agree with that. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would like, can I?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, I think last week's searches, we have had pretty good cross-functional representation. So if there's unhappiness with people being stakeholders, I'd be curious to get some feedback on that.
Yeah.
I thought we did cover that very well the last couple of times.
Yeah, I wanted to pick up on that and, and kind of from, remembering just been through the process in the past. I guess, partly suspects that no matter how large a committee we have, there will be people who report later that they were not heard if candidate they, they want is not the person who's selected. But conversely, I wonder kind of what is the, what is the right level of involvement to actually ensure we are making the best decision? Like, I want to make sure we are not doing community involvement and kind of expanding, drawing out the process, expanding the size of the group for the sake of saying we did, if we don't actually believe it's going to lead to us making a better decision. And so my bias, just based on searches and other contexts that I've been involved in, is to think that it's really important to have a variety of perspectives at the table, meaning we do want to make sure, you know, that you have parents there, that you have staff and faculty that, you have administrators, but that the sort of diminishing marginal returns from having a lot, a lot of them kicks in pretty quickly. And that I'd rather err on us, on the side of us having a smaller committee that hires, that does the best possible job hiring a superintendent and leaves some people saying they wish they were more involved than one that minimizes people saying they weren't involved by campers at all, our ability to work through the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the same. And then the question becomes whether we want to do community forum or not. I mean, that could be one way to really just have that opportunity. And sometimes when you, when you have a good opportunity, if people feel comfortable sharing, you start to get some repeat feedback, you know, not repeat feedback, but that some shared sentiments about it and that could give us some guidelines. And I think, I, I definitely think that's really important. I think it's been a hard time for everyone and nobody in this committee is being cavalier about anyone's struggles, anxieties, or added workload that results when we don't have consistent appropriate leadership. So we, we don't take that lightly at all. And I, I don't want to think we do. So I think it's important just to think about that. We'll make some more conversation tomorrow, make some decisions. And perhaps again, maybe from the LEA will, from our broader community will give us their thoughts about that. I think a community forum can be done, we can get that input, it doesn't have to bother us now.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's important for people who are going to be vetting these candidates to know what they can ask. I, I think there are often perceptions of what you can't ask. So it's, it's important to, to, to really understand the latitude that is allowable when, when vetting a candidate.
Okay, we will meet tomorrow. I'll, assuming we, assuming we reach agreement and solve all of these questions, I'll send an update, letting you guys know what the timeline and so forth is. And I think goal will be the next meeting on November 14th will be midway through receiving applications already, have a search committee in place. I forgot timeline, could potentially even start to identify some candidates to invite for interviews or else we'll do that shortly thereafter.
One, one other thought, just because you had mentioned about sort of first order of business is just determining whether, you know, what we will do relative to an intro. Because it's not in the public portion, the initial portion will probably be in executive session, I presume.
Unfortunately, we can't, if, unless we intend to advance more than one candidate to the full committee, we can't discuss and we cannot discuss and screen down to a single candidate in executive session.
Well, maybe we have to, because I mean, I don't have the MGL loaded up, but I guess I'm concerned because certainly in the past, the initial stages of our screening and interviewing for permanent candidates have been in the executive session.
Right.
And the, the, the general dialogue of who we might have, I guess I'm concerned about how that might play out.
Yeah, I, so I spoke with Liz LeFond about this question for a while this afternoon. And the distinction is if we are a preliminary screening or interviewing body, that is appropriately down to executive session because there is still a final public interview of multiple candidates and decision made by the full committee. If we are tasked with actually identifying who we think the right person is and the committee is primarily going to approve that person, we can't do that in executive session.
Okay, so I assume with some, there's been some prior conversations so people are aware that their names may come up, et cetera. I trust that that was a little unclear on how that works. Thank you.
Yeah, the general guideline is if you have a lot of candidates and you're reviewing them because they may not have notified their own districts if they're looking, that you do that in executive session. But what, but once you get to people who are going to come to the full committee, it has to be public. So.
Question, was there?
You may.
I've got a few of the searches. I always thought that we had to ask the same questions to each individual. Is that still, that's true?
It is true. And I think that what Orin's getting at is having a, some of the questions be broad enough that you can ask the question, but maybe get it aspects of their resumes or whatever the question might be such that, but you do have to, you have to consistently ask the same questions. Yeah.
That's happened to me several times too, Dave.
Yeah.
Drive home and you want to just drive right out because it was a dozen questions to show us.
I could, can I just comment on one? I think that that's the other part of the prep that we'll be doing is really thinking about questions and making sure, you know, I think the purpose for that obviously is to avoid the actual bias, discrimination and/or the appearance of that. It seems like, oh, we've asked these questions to these people, then you ask these other totally different questions. How are you comparing, you know, your candidates? So the idea obviously is to make it fair and appropriate and transparent, but then also you're right to dig in a little deeper. We can open that up, look at the questions. Yeah, I think that's the, the upfront work.
Okay. Hi, I was part of the principal search and one thing that I found kind of distracting throughout the process was that everybody had.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, who are you?
Yeah, my name's Laura Seston.
Of course, I'm so sorry. I know you, but I, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
And everybody had a laptop and every single person was typing everything that the candidate was saying. And maybe if there's one person like a script or transcriber or something like that, and then everybody else can actually listen to what's being said, there's no way to think about a follow-up question if you're spending all of your time typing. And I think it was kind of rude, honestly, to the candidates as well. It's super distracting. It's just loud click clapping and might be something that you want to consider about changing the actual format. Because, I mean, think about it.
To do that.
No, no, I know, I was with you and I, I stopped doing it because I couldn't concentrate for myself on what the person was actually saying because I was typing. And that's, I don't know.
Also hope that we'll be in person.
We were, yeah.
Yeah, we were in person, but that's what we were instructed to do. We were, it's part of that as well.
Might not be the best way.
Okay. I said, okay, moving on, superintendent's report is going to be given by Ms. Falkowski.
So first item in the report is the enrollment figures year-over-year from October of '21 to October of '22. In year-over-year overall, last year, there were 726 students in the district this year. On October 1, it was 781. Breaking that down, the elementary in 2021 had 298 students in '22, '23, '24. Elementary just for '28 and '21 and for '41 in 2022. So when you look at the chart and you look at the grades, you can see that there's an influx of some residents in the lower grades that we know about already. And then there also was a bit of an increase in choice in some of the lower grades as well. Our percentage of choice in '21 was 37.6%. And in '22, it's 40.59%. So the guidelines are 40% overall and no more than 50% in a grade. We do have a few grades that are at 51, just over the 50, and that would be grade three and grade five and grade 10. So we have three grades that are currently over the 50% mark. Overall, the district is hovering just above the 40% mark.
I think one of the members had asked, you know, I think maybe David had asked possibly if we could have those June numbers because we knew that we had taken some students in from October 1 to June. And so the comparison there shows that between the October 1, 2021 numbers and 2022, June 29, that we'd, we had already. That we'd, we had already added twelve choice students at that point during the course of last year. Where it seemed like if you looked at the choice numbers from twenty twenty one to right now. That we'd added thirty two or something, but really. Nineteen were added this, this year, but twelve had been added prior. So. And that was really the. We presented these numbers at, at the previous school committee meeting on the eleventh. Without the, excuse me, without them being official at that point. Now they are the official numbers. So that was, I think, the biggest change was, I think that's what you'd wanted to know or.
Yeah, I thought it would be good to compare. Where we start, where we then get that started.
Right.
So we take choice all year long or?
Well, we did last year because there was. Not, not typically. Not typically. We did last year because there was a, there was some concerns about our enrollment numbers being low. And I don't remember all the details, but the, the committee had, had authorized, you know, why don't we look at taking some students during the year? And.
How many kids are in kindergarten? Do you mind me asking?
Let me reopen that.
Yeah, there are thirty, there are thirty five resident kids in kindergarten. Plus, plus twine choice, which is typical. So.
Okay. FY twenty twenty four budget timeline?
The twenty four budget timeline is, has already begun. It comes very fast when you start the new year. So we started with. The first thing that we asked for from the principals and the custodians. And we've bumped up our dates a bit so that we are. Getting through our meetings. And early December, we're able to hash out some numbers. Try to finalize numbers before the January ninth, ninth presentation. So in some of those dates, like in October, we bumped it back just a little bit, maybe a week. Early December versus mid-December because we had the holidays there. It was. It was somewhat difficult to pull everything together during that timeframe. So I think this will help. With the overall production of the budget. Everything else follows along pretty much the same. The school committee. Meetings are in hold, so we have it set up the same way with it, with an overview on January ninth. Presentation of all of the. Beginning presentation of the individual department budgets. January thirtieth is the secondary budget. And then capital plan discussion, school community deliberation. Public hearing and then the annual time. So those are all fairly similar to last year's. What's changed a bit is just.
And just a quick question for Mr. Lee. Is January thirtieth going to work for you for secondary presentation or should we switch that? With. The elementary one. Tim?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is January thirtieth going to work for the secondary budget presentation for you? Or would it be better for you to have the earlier one? Okay, so I think maybe switch the elementary and switch those two. That gonna work? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Adams Scholarship recipients. We're not going to be announcing the names because the students have actually not received their letters from the state. We have the names, but. We have, you know, quite a robust number of students who've qualified. For the Adams. Scholarship. And I don't know, unless if you had something you were going to say on that.
I think there's about fifteen that have qualified and once Dassie releases the letters to the families, then we'll. Then we'll bring back the list and publicly commend them.
Right. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, the principal search and. Dr. Goslin sent out something to. All of us over the weekend. About. The search and. I don't know if people have any questions on that, but. It essentially outlines. The. What could be the possibility going forward? I know some members had some questions about this at our last meeting on Thursday night, so.
Could we just start, I've heard obviously the interim end of full time.
Right.
I think it would be helpful to start with interim.
Yeah.
And. Mr. Lee, I'm, it was steep at all. On this point, but I think it'd be helpful to make treble and on the same page about. Availability.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit. So. First, I think I'll talk a little bit about. Just kind of where the school is at right now in terms of. Its readiness to take on another different brand new school leader versus. Continuing with somebody that's already there and perhaps redistribute responsibilities or something like that. And I think I speak for. A good portion of the staff when I say that having another new leader come in mid-year that nobody has met. Or has experience with would feel like another disruption to the school year and. So in terms of my availability and where I'm at right now, I. I shared this with Dr. Goslin that. I'm. Ready to remain in my current responsibilities until about the end of January. So that's why January thirtieth wasn't that quite work with me, but. And then I'm going away for a little while, a little more than a month. And during that time. I'll be available to do some remote work, continue some of the written work that. And planning work that Dave and I have started at the high school. And then when I return in early March, I'm not really sure how I'll be able to commit, if I'll be able to commit. At this time, it looks like. I'll likely be able to help out for three days a week or so if I'm needed at that time. And I think that will probably be my case through the end of the year. As long as I have some flexibility with when I might need to meet some of my other commitments outside of school. So that's about all I can tell you right now about, about where I'm at.
Any, any questions?
I think a clarification a little bit. So. Let me set this right. You, you feel that. Bringing someone in. Would be disruption and that, and then to. To fill in through the end of the year. That even on a, what would be the better plan to, to stick with you and but. So far, I got it right. And, and then.
Let me just back up a little bit. I'm not sure if it would be a better plan. I guess the point that I'd like to make is that if. If somebody could be found for. The interim responsibilities, if indeed that's the way you're going right now. Either when I start my absence or during my absence or even starting in. February and then going through the remainder of the year, if that person could be someone who is sort of known or familiar or has some sort of background. Connection to the staff and the community already. I guess what I was trying to say is that that would be a favorable approach, I think, to most folks instead of bringing somebody in new. People don't have any experience with.
And you feel that with a three day a week, let's say your two day, two, three day a week commitment through the end of the year, that that. Would cover the needs of the school?
Partially. I, I don't, I can't really say yet. So. Right now, I've been. Four days a week, five days. I'd be hopeful that kind of Mister, I could set Mister Q up and myself so that. We'd have more of a routine in terms of when we do certain things and that. Covering some of the in-person responsibilities, we could arrange that in such a way that we could make that work. It would be ideal, but again, if we find ourselves in that situation, then. I think I'll be available.
And for those of you who. Out there watching or whatever, who don't know Mr. Lee, he's a former principal in the district as well as superintendent of the district and comes extremely well qualified. We're very thankful that he's been able to step in and do this. For whatever length of time it ends up being.
Was someone else going to follow up? So I think that that, two things. One is assuming that we are successful in having an interim superintendent. I don't want to be too rosy, but the good news would be that there would also be a superintendent to help. Provide leadership. Throughout that period of time and not solely on what you very generously are offering of your availability, that it wouldn't be. Left solely to that. And then I think that goes to the question of. Engaging in the principal search mindful of. Who will ultimately make that decision. But it seems like we still will be. Talking about hiring a permanent principal that would then take duties. July first or not, of course, if not sooner. Right? I'm looking at the process, my fellow members.
Yeah.
I'm thinking July first.
Did I say? Yeah.
He said or sooner.
Well. Only in the event that that is going to be our selected principal, but I don't want to speak for who, if that candidate is actually going to be our principal, there might be something to be said for. Starting at a time, but it wouldn't be yet another interim person. I, that's what I believe I was hearing you said. Bring someone outside, then they leave, bring another person outside, you know, that's what I think you're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my one thought about this is. In addition to being appreciative of what you're doing for us right now, being incredibly appreciative of. Kind of continuing on documentation, well, with everything else you have going on in the spring. So it, it is in admiration of that, not denigration of it, that I say that I don't think. Three days a week. Is sufficient, especially with, I think realistically, our interim superintendent is unlikely to be full time. Either. And at some point, I think we need to step back and ask. Why? Why do we have these full-time positions? I mean, we actually run extremely lean in this district at the administrative level. And. It strikes me as a real minimum for the things that need to get done to have. A principal and an assistant principal full-time at LMHS. To have a superintendent and assistant superintendent full-time central office, have a principal at Morris, have a full-time director of student services. Just sort of like how many jets on the engine can blow out at once. I don't see how. Well, it does not make sense to me to knowing right now sign up for February, March, April, May. Five, twelve, you know, fully half of the school year to be down. Two of the five or six, you know, to have, to have multiple of those positions, part-time or less. And so I, I think to Mr. Lee's point, if we can find the right interim candidate who's someone. Folks are familiar with that, that strikes me as ideal. But in, in the list of options, person can be there full-time and people are familiar with would be number one. Other full-time administrative coverage for our district would be number two before we get down to. Sort of slapping it together with multiple part-time interns and key positions.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I just, I think the question we were raising too is the status of the principal search. Hearing what Mr. Lee is able to generously offer us, I think is good to know. And then I think we need to. Move forward with. That process as well. But we've got a lot of tomorrow and then we'll continue that conversation, I presume.
I think one of the reasons that this came up at the last meeting was. We had heard that the interim search had been stopped and we were wondering like. Like why, knowing you were leaving for four to six weeks or whatever. I think we were wondering. Precisely why had that been closed, knowing that you had offered. To keep on going, but whether that was going to be service best, you know.
Yes, right. And to my comments, I was still wondering why it stopped and thinking that it needs to, to start.
Well, that's the question, right? Does it need to start to hire an interim or do we need to just move forward with the process to hire a new principal? And if we're doing both at the same time, are all three searches at the same time, are we. At odds for what we're doing versus moving forward with identifying the candidate for principal that we believe will be. That serve our district and ensure that we. Have that transition rather than multiple transitions, which. I'm in favor with moving forward. And we're not voting at this point unless we need to, but I'm in favor of us moving forward with finding a principal. And, you know, gratefully ensuring that we have. Sufficient people in leadership. And I know that we are also tapping into other people within the building who are stepping up and doing additional duties. So I don't think it's that it's, you know, there are other people also that aren't in the list of. Here talking to Mr. Lee, I'm looking at Ms. Cherry, because I'm sure she's aware that there are people that are doing other things in the building to help out in various distributed leadership type ways. So.
Did we have an open question from the last meeting? Was that I believe there was a question about since the. Principal is appointed by the superintendent, we were unclear if. There was a. You know, that's pretty clear. In the MGL, the question is, I mean, I can't. I'm sure we can't request a self-serving. Exception to the MGL. However. Is there an area that of it that, I think we'll check with attorney to see if there's an area that, that under these circumstances. That there's another path.
No, we, we talked with our attorney the other day and she said that the law is quite clear on who appoints. So it would be in our situation, it would be our. Interim superintendent presumably that would be the person who'd be here at the time that that would take place. We, we asked if there was an opportunity for a greater role for the school committee to play. And of course, the school committee can always have three members on the search committee, which I believe we had at least two, maybe, maybe more. On the, on the last one. And then I, I asked about, you know, maybe being part of the vetting of candidates. Which is all superintendent's purview. And. But I think there could be a role there. There could be a role there. But in terms of the actual appointment, that has to be the superintendent.
And, and various superintendents have engaged in. Collaborative, open conversations and others have made choices a little bit more focused on what they want and the vision they have for the district. And that's what we hire them for. But. Ultimately, I think what we'd be asking for is an open and collaborative process and. Probably something we'd be discussing with an interim and. Ensuring that we have some sense of confidence in the decision that's made.
Oh, here.
Allow me to offer an additional brainstorm to the three that Orin. Listed in terms of the priorities.
Sure.
And so I think there's some kind of hybrid to be had as well if we can't find. An interim principal. With whom the faculty is and student body for that matter is, you know, knows and trusts and. All of that because we have that in Mr. Lee and. You know, we're going through our goal setting and everyone walks out of their meeting with Mr. Lee comments on what a great meeting that was and. You know, it just, the, the whole tone in the building. Has changed in my view and in many of the other people on the faculty. But I wonder if there isn't a high. But I wonder if there isn't a hybrid to be had if we don't have someone who's familiar, could we also tap Mr. Lee as an advisor to both. A brand-new vice principal in the role and then this interim person so that. You wouldn't be down, you'd actually be up. Right? And so I just wanted to offer that as a brainstorm.
Yeah, no, that's that's a true comment in my mind and I would continue to grab every continually hour we can. And then a few that doesn't mean to leave within reach. But I just for our deliberations here, I think we really helpful to separate the interim and permanent searches. I stipulating that there's always the possibility that we find a permanent person who's just sitting around doing nothing and wants to. Come in full time in March and that'd be an incredible problem to have, but assuming that that does not happen and the full-time principal is going to be a July first person. He seemed to me to be almost entirely independent decisions that we have to make. Keeping in mind Ronnie's point that. Every additional search that we have to deal with takes somebody's time and attention. And so before we talk anymore about the permanent principal search, which we do need to talk about and needs to be moving, I think we should resolve the interim. Search, just talking about that and. The superintendent is not here and we can't speak with him about what he's envisioning and it's not clear to me the extent to which. We can or should direct him in what to do on this. But I do think we need to decide. Here now. What we want to see happen and have that be our goal. And if that is identify. And and, you know. There can be degrees of freedom there. We might decide right now as we say, you know, the plan that Mark has presented would be essentially what. What Tim described and that that's not. Sufficient and so we we want to be more than that. And that means. Finding additional resource and. There needs to be a process that we that that would be my preference if folks want to go another way, that we go another way, but I think we that is a sort of discrete decision we have to come to now.
Yeah, and I know that while the search was open for an interim, I don't know when it closed, but. For some period of time it was open, that there were candidates, I think maybe as many as eight candidates that had emerged, so. So whether it even needs to be reopened or not, again, I don't know where, I don't know if those candidates meet. Some of the criteria that Mr. Lee's outlined or I don't know, I don't know who the candidates are. But at least there's a candidate pool of some size that's already been identified, having responded to the ad for an interim, so. That's. So I think I I do think that we should be going. Forward with with the if that's enough or or renew the posting. For the interim. You know. Taking into account what Mrs. Cherry has said and what Mr. Lee's said. In in terms of, you know, what we might. End up with, but for for that February to June portion of the school year. Do we want to make that a motion?
Well, I guess I wonder, right? Because if if it's not within our purview as a school committee to direct the superintendent to.
That's true.
Move forward with hiring a principal and Dr. Goslin has actually given us. I don't know if everyone's received a copy of it, there was an outline of the timing and the steps to be taken. Did everybody get that? Then I think that we can certainly express our preference here in our deliberations, but I do don't believe a motion is appropriate because that would be sending some policy or directive. Outside and I I do think that Dr. Goslin has a reasonable place planned in place now, understanding that. In parallel, we're looking at a potential interim superintendent, I think we could certainly revisit the issue with that person. As we identify them and say, do we need to do an interim? But I think the moving forward with the principal search, the timing is right, there have been people expressing interest, I think both on the interim level and at a permanent level. I think we need to get ahead of that process and make sure that we have a great committee and. A broad pool, some of our challenges last time, I think, was the fact that it was at the end of the year and so a lot of people had made other commitments. You know, I I just think that we move forward with the permanent, knowing that there are a number of positions, opportunities in place for an interim. And it's an ongoing conversation. I don't think it's an. You know, I don't think it's a anything that's closed off, but we have potential candidates for interim, we move forward with the, you know, with. Supporting Dr. Goslin's plan for finding a principal, knowing that he may not be the one actually executing that if we have an interim in place and I think. You know, postings have to go out, committees need to come together and, you know, a lot of robust conversations should be happening and. I think I'm getting the sense from feedback, I'm getting that people are anxious for those conversations, so. Those could certainly be happening to pull together a committee and. Begin that process. I mean, it's tricky because ultimately the decision would be under the guise of a superintendent, but there are a lot of. People, I think, in the process and I think I'd like to see us. Move forward with that as Dr. Goslin is out. Why?
I would love to make a motion tonight. Unfortunately, you know, this agenda has been set. Well, in advance and it's disappointing that Dr. Goslin's not here and I feel like it's just another roadblock for us at this point. We need to get moving, you know, we have several vacancies to fill and. I I find it very challenging to do so under these circumstances.
Well, Dr. Lawson did outline in the, I don't know if you saw the little chart, that the posting would happen and the and the posting and.
Sorry, just to clarify, we now drifted into the full-time.
Oh, yeah. Right, yeah, yeah.
So maybe the committee will be able to clarify a position and this is what I keep getting hung up on. It's not a hiring decision that the committee. Or either the annual. Full-time position, so we don't really control that process, is my understanding, that is the superintendent's process. If that is correct, then I don't see where we can do anything other than ask the superintendent. To pursue an interim position over a permanent position.
Yes, no, I I think that's actually.
Exactly, is that?
I mean.
You're right.
Right, I think.
Well, I don't agree with either. I don't like it at all. The only thing that makes me happy so far is if Tim's agreed to stay around, though.
But David, if I could clarify, I'm interested in, I have an interesting, like, this is a standard poem in management, which is regardless of what the law says, we can't go. Hire somebody ourselves anyway. We are at the mercy of the people whose jobs it is to do these things ultimately. And so there's a question of sort of. Legally, what decisions we can make and those are typically binary decisions like vote yes or no on a policy, extend an offer to this person or that person. And it's very clear who owns that decision. But there's a much greater area here. Of interaction between. Any superintendent and particularly one who is leaving and will not be here at the time when we are trying to cover. All of these things and a committee that is trying to figure out how we would like to see the district move forward during that period. And it's certainly within our purview, I think, to establish what our preference and request is. And at that point, I suppose it would be open to him to say no. But I do think it's incumbent on us and and this goes, you're such involved to. Have essentially a sense of the committee, I mean, that motion would certainly be appropriate to say it's the sense of the committee. That we want full-time coverage. Athletics at L M M H S. Throughout the remainder of the year. I mean, let's keep in mind, we're literally, they don't feel this way, but we're only six or seven weeks into the school year at this point. Sorry, sorry, sorry to bring it up. We are, we are fifteen percent of the way through this year and so. If it is the sense of the committee that. We would like to see a plan in place to ensure that there's full-time coverage during that period and that we do not have confidence. In the plan that he's described, it's certainly our prerogative. To put that forward and if that is the way we feel, I think it's our obligation to to put that forward.
And I can, you know, I can let him know that I I spoke to him last week about about what I felt was the need to get the full search going. As soon as possible, just so he can begin to get names and get the committee started and all that, likely that he won't be part of the process for for very long, but that at least get the process started.
So I. I do think it's worth making a motion so that Bob, what you're letting him know is that the committee deliberated on this and this is what we like to see happen. And certainly if their members of the committee disagree that they have the opportunity to say that as well. I would make it a sense of the committee motion.
Can I and and could certainly do it after you formulate the motion, but I'm just thinking that's some of the question I'm gonna kind of dig into a little bit. Hearing Mr. Lee and some of our representatives here, including. This chair on behalf of the LEA and other heads nodding as well as I don't know what inputs coming in on Zoom, but. I I hundred percent do believe that we need full coverage and to ensure that personnel and staff have the resources that they need at all times. I feel like if we go forward with a motion to. Not direct, but to. Express our preference that an interim search happens. When we have something that people feel is working for now and is and is going well, while we're also looking for a principal. The the concern I have is then we're compounding the issue that's already the issue. I mean, I I fully understand that we as a school committee hire our superintendent and then we have to run the district, run the district to the best. Of our ability and there are a lot of people that are involved in this and these these decisions do have an impact on them and the. And that we, you know. Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, I don't, I don't know who's in the interim pool, I don't know what that looks like, I mean, I think the preferences that are expressed here are important. I think some of our preferences expressed are important, there's a lot still to be determined, including who is going to be leading the district between now and a permanent superintendent. So I think. I'm hesitant to put forward through a motion something, but we have our next meeting, meanwhile, the full-time principal search is going to go forward. We have a pool of candidates for the interim and then we then have another convening on how we're doing because. We're making a lot of, we're having a lot of conversations, making a lot of decisions right here, a lot of it actually within a vacuum because we don't actually have the information in front of us. And we do have stable leadership right now and we have people saying, okay, and they're stepping up and they're doing what they need to do. It's it's not January twentieth, it's October twenty-fourth and we have meetings in between and we can call meetings in between as we need to. So I guess my feeling about it is and I and all of us would prefer if Dr. Goslin was available today. But I think we've we've got a number of decisions to make and I don't want to. Direct or suggest one thing when we have, we we don't have all the information in front of us. That's that's just my feeling about it. And of course, when we, you know, any motions that come forward or seconded. Votes will happen and we'll do our job and we're supposed to do it, so. That's where I'm just a little murky.
Well, thank you. That will give me a moment to attempt to compose a motion. So I will also run and your folks are welcome to table or reject it, but I hopefully this has, but but at least I was saying. I move to express the sense of the committee that LMHS should have resources equivalent to two full-time administrators. Throughout this school year and the superintendent, the superintendent should proceed promptly with identifying the best plan to provide that coverage.
Any. Discussion. Or any further discussion? Okay.
Yeah, but could you read that one again?
Google should make software for managing motions in live meetings.
They probably have.
Who needs it could afford to pay them for.
He probably have it. Somebody's got something like that.
I'm old enough to say that it used to get stenographer.
We need, we need the overhead projected.
I've just outed myself, but that's how we used to do it when we were reading in the court.
So you're all, so were you gonna read that back to us?
And there were some carrots and some.
To express the sense of the committee that LMHS should have resources equivalent to two full-time administrators. Throughout this year and the superintendent should see the problem, identify the best plan to provide better.
What's happening? Is everyone on the screen getting dizzy?
Okay, any further discussion?
Was there a second?
Yeah.
I I have a concern that it 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 may be a little too open-ended. My 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 concern is. I'll just, I'll just be like the devil's advocate, what if, what if you can come back and says, well, this is the best plan? The one I put forward, this and and then where does that leave us?
Well, the motion said the best plan to provide that cover. So it has to be a plan that has the equivalent of two full-time administrators at LMHS.
It does with to start at the top and hire a superintendent first, I think it.
Without. Robin Peter to pay Paul in in a way without.
That's that's a fair question. He, I certainly the. Leaves room for him to do a bad job, but I think I also appreciated Ronnie's point that. This is this meeting and I think. This is a good narrowing from which we will then we can see where we are. But if you want to do it.
Yeah, I just, I just. You know. I I'm probably looking at this in that. I don't kind of understand how. The superintendent can't hire a principal, like, what, why, we're, we're vacant a spot and the. I don't kind of understand, we can't tell the principal or the superintendent to go higher. I mean, I, you know, not literally just hire an interim principal, but, you know, we we need coverage and we need, we need a body, touch the body, but we need someone there and and. Works for us and. We, you know, we we can't leave the school anymore and it, that that's my concern and if it can be narrowed down, that that's fine, comfortable with that. I mean, this is a good place to start. I I just feel that. I'm a bit anxious to see it.
I guess the the concept of equivalent of two full-time. Then might be the situation where we have two people who have, which really is expressed on behalf and I believe. Mr. Q might be with us somewhere and at least job on a lot of duties as well, have said that for now they're working. To create a plan, I've heard some sense that people are really confident with what's happening right now. We come in and we say, because Mr. Lee has said he's four days a week, which he seems to be making work and we say, well, now, no, it has to be full-time, it has to be five days a week. Under this motion and it has to happen now, so we go back to the interim pool. We don't have the person from inside that people trust and knows, we bring someone else and I just feel like there's a level of micromanaging here that I'm also hearing is. I'm not suggesting that there are existing concerns, certainly people here express their concerns, but I'm hearing some reassurance from a number of leaders from the school. That are saying that right now some things are working better than they have in a while and I want to trust that and I want to. Not neglect that, as I said, we have more meetings, so it's not like we're just like, we're, we're, we'll see in January. I just think that we should let things play out the way they're playing out right now and move forward with all diligence in hiring a permanent principal and. and respect some of, not that we're being disrespectful, but I'm just saying, respect is the word, like of what we're being told about how things are working. And I and I know we have questions. I'm not suggesting that it's just open and shut, but that that's that's where I am and where I'm likely to not support this, not because I don't support ensuring that we have the administrators that we need, but I have not creating a system because of what we think here at these tables, when we're being told that some things are working. And and the things that might need some tweaking will should be tweaked. And I think if there's concerns, I have no doubt that we will have robust input from people about what their concerns are.
I I think one of the concerns is things are working now, but what happens after we we've had a what happens from February towards the end of the year? And and if I if I if I understand the way the the motion is worded, we need the equivalent of two full-time people, but perhaps that's a hybrid of three. So it there there would be some flexibility in in having being in having the continuity of 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 Mr. Lee, should he decide to continue as well as the augmentation of someone else through the community trusts and
So Dr. Goslin put a nice can chart with that memory sent out. I'm not very comfortable with that gap.
And I think that's what came up on Thursday night was that question.
There are any number of things that could happen in that post-January timeframe? It would, it would be a problem.
And as I said, I think the conversation is ongoing about that as we make some other decisions.
Any further comment on the motion? Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, five to one. Okay. That was that part. Now we do, now it's all right, full-time. So also on that can chart was the outline of the process and and it and it seems to me that the most important thing now is to get it posted. And, you know, maybe we get you know, maybe serendipitously we get some candidates who are are absolutely the person we want to have leading the high school in the future and that person can start on February first, but I think that's unlikely. I think I I think that it's more likely that it would be a more traditional July first timetable. But I think at least the process should get started. And I think that's really all we probably need to decide tonight. So, and that's that's, you know, on the the timetable that Dr. Goslin has suggested to us, so.
And we don't start doing interviews until January? Is that just because it's the natural key to hiring something?
Um, I think, yeah, I think that in reality, the forming of the committee doesn't take anywhere near two months, you know. Yeah, a week might, you know, might be necessary. But during that timeframe, it would be, it would be formed because you're gonna take candidates. The job's gonna be posted for potentially, and maybe and maybe we don't want it posted as long as it is because you can typically get candidate pool in four to six weeks, but and and during that same timeframe, you're forming the committee and you know, but when you get to January, you know, interviewing the candidates, so you, so the posting of the job. Yeah, I mean, maybe it's one of those things where you say the posting stays open, but it may be filled, you know, in the meantime because of that blue bar, the January interview, and you may find that you've got your candidate. You don't need to, you can close the posting. But I think the key is to get it posted.
Are there any drawbacks to not jumping right on this?
Well, the for a principal's job, the hiring, the the timeframe can be a little bit later than a superintendent and still be successful. I mean, you could be hiring, you could be making your decision in February or March. In our case, I mean, we're not expecting that this person will be the person who steps in, you know, during Tim's interim period, so it's, it could be, it could be maybe pushed a little bit further down, but you don't want to really go, I think you want to have it posted no later than November. And so you're really talking about, I mean, here we are in the last week of October, so maybe it gets posted this week, maybe it's next week. But you're in that timeframe, you know.
It it occurs to me too that some discussion that happened in the earlier part, the open comments of tonight was would be to have someone other than our present outgoing superintendent make the decision. So therefore, what you don't want to do is bifurcate, start the process, interview with one, you want to know who is actually making the decision. So, you know, knowing again that we're going to be looking at the issue of an interim superintendent, then that person would probably assist us in the process and lead the process for interviewing and making the decision. So if we brought the interviews forward before we have an interim in place, that might be actually against what it is we're saying we want to try to accomplish. So I'm, I think that this timeline, although certainly tweakable, acceptable word, but if we get the posting out and begin to form a committee that really, you know, feels like it's a, and and maybe even again, if we have a conversation that includes a community conversation with a lot of input, my understanding in this because I was on the last principal search committee is that there were a lot of people that were interested. There was a need to do a lottery because there were far too many, there were some like forty people and it's just a very unwieldy way to do it, but there, you know, certainly input is important and how do we take that input? And I think that's goes to the earlier conversation we had. So I feel like this timeline is fine for now. And if we get the posting out and begin and keep it really, really well publicized with a lot of potential good candidates who will be committed to our district as a principal, and I think that's step one, seems to me.
I don't think I got the answers. Is this timeline reflective of the typical principal hiring cadence?
Yes, I mean, you know, you're going to have, I mean, principal searches take place all all the time, all year long, but in terms of trying to get someone lined up before other people get them, this is not a bad timetable. It could go, it could go into March and you'd still be in a good, you'd you'd still be in a good place.
And I I if I can add, I think there also was a concern if you're hiring someone and you have an outgoing superintendent, that person needs to know, they're not working for that person, they're looking for somebody who's coming in. So maybe that's why the january was heard it.
Yeah, no, it's gonna, I think it's gonna fit our circumstances. I think that we'll have an interim in place, I think, relatively quickly. I mean, that's not my decision, but but I think we will. Anything else on the principal search? Okay, Montessori approval, and just so you know, the Montessori school has been operating for a number of years. It used to operate in the country shops and and then it built a building and it's been operating down in Lenoxdale for quite a few years. They got approval years ago from the school committee superintendent at that time. They can't find that letter. They asked us to redo it. Go ahead, you can.
In September, Dr. Goslin, Ryan Kelly, the director of student services, and I went to the Montessori school and met with the director and had a tour and watched the the education taking place in the classrooms and we talked about the financial and really the whole structure of the school. I, we were all confident that it is, you know, it's running the way that we would run there. Their practices are different. There's a lot of hands-on and you could probably speak more to that, but it's it's the Montessori principles that they follow, so we would expect that.
And so it requires by law, we have to approve any private or parochial school operating within our jurisdiction and so it's come to us for a motion and a vote. And the recommendation. No, I don't believe it's the end, like, I think.
It's actually, I mean, no, there is a year.
Fifteen years ago, maybe. It was a long time ago and 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 I think they, I think what triggered it was they have something they have to submit somewhere and they didn't have the document, so that's why they asked us to come back and do it again. We have not had problems with their operation, you know, over the years. So is there a motion?
A motion that we approve the issuance of a letter endorsing the Montessori school pursuant to a Leamanta attached.
To policy LBC.
There we go. Policy LBC.
Did you get that, Amy? Any further comments? All in favor? Okay.
So, I'm sorry, can I clarify who writes the letter? Is it school committee or would you want central admin to write a letter that school committee then signs?
I think have central admin write the letter and then we'll sign it.
It seems like that coupled with the minutes approved would would probably what they need, right?
Yeah, I'm not precisely sure whether is it it's been a long time since we've approved a school. I think it was the Christian school was the last time, you know, that I was there and I don't really recall. I have a clue what needs to be in that letter, so. But thank you. Uh, we have a couple other issues that have come up. One at least a couple of us in the committee had some discussion with a parent who was concerned about the bullying. The response to a bullying concern that that she had regarding her child at the high school and had had sends an email to Dr. Goslin who hadn't responded. It was sent, it was sent a week ago Monday and by Friday he hadn't responded and in re- in reality, he had actually met with the high school administration, but he had not responded to the parent. Any of these issues are not really school committee issues. They're they're, they really belong in the the bailiwick initially of the principals. If it's not satisfactory, something not satisfactory to the parent, then according to our bullying policy, it would go to the superintendent, which it did. And I think that the concern the ongoing concern of the parent was that she hadn't heard anything from Dr. Goslin as of Friday or Saturday, Friday or Saturday, I don't remember which day it was.
I I I wanted to chime in on that and it was really, I mean, when you read about any kind of bullying happening, it's upsetting and it's just acceptable and particular case was extremely upsetting. What was even more upsetting, and I I I don't mean to set a negative tone at all, but you know, the school committee is here for certain things. And if a superintendent is not responding to a parent about a serious issue that is affecting their child, that's a major problem. And I know when, you know, we were talking, Bob, he said it doesn't really lie in our wheelhouse and that's true according to the law, right? But what happens? What is, what is the next step? Because we cannot, we can't let these things keep happening and furthermore, I think the longer that we push out, filling these vacancies, the 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 more is at stake, right? The longer these things are gonna go on for, because who is equipped and who is in-house full-time in the future to handle these things? If our superintendent won't handle them, then who's next?
Well, it's not that the superintendent is not handling them. You know, he had met with the high school administration. Wednesday, he didn't respond to the parent, you know, so presumably it's it's in the hands of of the high school administration. You know, with, you know, with Dr. Goslin having worked with them. You know. And that's really where the committee needs to leave it because we can't it's not our purview to actually be doing this unless it came, unless somewhere down the road, if something came to us for a hearing, which I is not really part of the the bullying policy in any cases that, you know, these issues are to be dealt with at the school level and superintendent level, not the school committee level. So it it's difficult because when you read the concerns, obviously they're deep concerns. And and it's troubling to read, but that said, it's it's not within our jurisdiction. So that said, I guess I've said that a few times. It is important that we update our bullying policy according to their recommendations from the law firm, although that wouldn't, that would not change what we're talking about here.
I just think something is owed to to that parent, whether it's, you know.
Um, you know, both Megan and I responded to the parent. And subsequently, Dr. Goslin has responded to the parent. The other thing came up on I'm not sure what day of the week it was, Thursday, Wednesday, we had meetings at Morris School. And during the first meeting, Megan and I, Veronica were there on and and several parents, several other parents, and Melissa and Mark and and Brenda and Brian, a lot of us sitting right in here. And on what came up with crossing, crossing guard issue at Mars in the afternoon, there is a crossing, you know, the police provide coverage in the morning. But not in the afternoon, it's right at shift switching time, and I don't really know what happens at shift time, whether they, people just come on duty and they're they're good to go with his meetings or whatever, but I had a meeting with the town manager today who said, whatever we want, he'll he'll work on. So I'll let him know tomorrow that we'd like to work and Brenda, have you tell us what the right time is for? Okay, yeah, yeah. So whatever the right timing is for a person to be down there, because I don't know if it's five after, ten after, whatever, you know, but uh, subcommittee meetings. Governance and Leadership canceled their meeting last week, as did Finance. On school building, there's been nothing new on that. Teaching, learning and culture, did you have a meeting?
We had a meeting on October twelfth, and it was really good. We had a lot of conversations about the goals for our for our committee, which really center on the issue of action around the bullying recommendations and that we take, you know, the issue is we have a policy, how is it working or not working, and so Dr. Goslin recommended. We very much agree that part of what we would be doing is engaging with a a task force, including parents and stakeholders and community members to be able to really dig into this in a way of what do we have, what do we need, what's working, what's not working. And then in addition to the actual task force to work on that and the task force could work on this as well, is to take a look at some of the more prevention, how do we develop community, how do we, we talked often, talked often, really talked about the second step program that's happening at Morris and we've all talked last year when the students presented how impressed we were and that 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 program is sort of lacking in the middle school. We've all talked last year when the students presented how impressed we were and that that, that program is sort of lacking in the middle school. So there's, there's a couple of different options. Um, Dr. Goslin had been also approached. Uh, by some community members who've been involved in the past, um, I think it was the World of Difference. And the Indu Defamation League Program, some faculty and students had been working on that, had begun mentors in the community and it was disrupted by, by the pandemic. And so what do we get back to? Do we get back to what we were doing? Well, there's another different cohort of kids. Do we look to expand the second step into middle school? Because that's what a lot of kids are. Used to and that seems to make a lot of sense, so, um, some of the work ahead is to be able to, um, get to that and make some decisions about. Curriculum, about process, about convening, um, a, a, a bullying prevention task force. Um, of the community and so that will be, the next steps we'll be working on. And then we also talked about community forums, uh, when Dr. Goslin did issue communication with the community after the report, which we acknowledged did not. Go out exactly the way we wanted to, um, that, that he did get some feedback from people in how we want to move forward. Um, and then we had the community forum at Morris last week and that was just a general. Come and meet and talk to us and so we actually broke that up into two age, that was broken up, it wasn't done by me when I was there. Um, broken up into two age groups to deal, you know, focus on the early childhood to second grade and then third to fifth and we had. Different groups of people actually with different ways that they wanted to talk about what they were interested in. And we, we hope to continue those conversations. They were really great, um, and then.
Just to jump on fast, there will be another community forum, I believe.
On Wednesday. And I will say, because I double-checked with Dr. Goslin today, because when I went to look and maybe sometimes. All the pages don't link up, but the district page said it, it said six to seven, but it isn't, it's. Five thirty to six fifteen and then six thirty to, I think, seven fifteen or something, so hopefully that will get corrected, so for those who are listening and watching, that will be happening. On Wednesday, um, and I also did see, and Mrs. Stone, I think is here, is doing some great work in community building. And you have a meeting on Thursday, right? To try to engage parents and thank you for that, um, you know, we have a very active PTO, PTO in. Morris School and the middle school, high school has always been a little bit different and sometimes those parent groups are focused on boosters or they're focused on. Particular, you know, demographics, but we really appreciate parents who are stepping up, wanting to be. More supportive and present and doing a lot of great activities at the schools. I really appreciate that. So that's some of what we're talking about. The main goals are to work on community discussions, forums. In really having some good communication with each other and then, um, getting going on this task force.
Okay, thank you. And then human resources. Human resources, we've, we've, we've. Rocking and rolling, um, and, and the meeting, uh, tomorrow is twelve thirty, twelve thirty. Okay. I think we, uh. Have concluded our business. Is there any? Motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.